Good morning, everyone. We will start our, open up our special work session meeting, March 22nd, 2022, this morning. I call to order the meeting, and would you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few items for discussion in our work session. Under strategic planning, we are going to ask Mr. Gent to please take it from here.
Good morning, everyone. A couple of announcements before we get started, and welcome back. It's good to, we just got off spring break, so it's good that everybody's here, and especially staff. They all came back from spring break, so that's always good. You never know, somebody falls in love, you know, they go down to the Keys.
It's a new job.
We don't see them again.
That's a problem.
Like I said, somebody falls in love. They take off. We'll do this a special, we'll do a special presentation at the next board meeting, but I did want to share this because this is really good news for the district. Once again, we were selected as Cambridge International District of the Year, School District of the Year in the medium district category. We won this award two years ago, and we'll get it, we're going to receive it again, and it's based upon the exams that have been taken in 2020 and in 2021, and this was really during the COVID time, one of the most challenging times, and yet we still continue to excel in that. So I just want to share that, and we'll have more information at the board meeting, and probably do a press release on it as well. But we just received that information the other day. And then the, these are still the old mics, the new stuff is on order, it's just, it's going to be probably another month or so. Terrence gives me an update on that. So when you get ready to talk, just hang tight for a second, so everybody, you know, because our sound guys are on top of it, but it's, we'll have better systems here soon. And then today, we have really three items, and the first one will be Mr. Conomus, Daryl Conomus is our Executive Director of School Research and Accountability. He's going to do an overview. We're in testing season, and so it's a little different than it's been in the past, but particularly for Mr. Kelly and Ms. Richardson. I wanted him to kind of just give an overview as to what that looks like in our school centers now. And then after that, Dr. Wild will come up and give us kind of an overview of the legislative session. It's very, it ended right, you know, it ended right last Monday. So we've really been on spring break, and you know, the governor could veto things. So this is kind of a satellite view of the legislation, which could be subject to change. But I just wanted to share that with the board. And then the board had requested before to talk about protocols and norms, and so that, you know, that information is available too. We can talk, you know, talk about that at the, as the third item. So, Mr. Conomus, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gent. Good morning, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Mr. Gent. My name is Daryl Conomus. I'm the Executive Director of Assessment and Accountability, and I'm going to give you a brief overview of the testing, basically what we're about to get into here at spring with RFA testing, okay? So we're going to go over some of these different topics, look at a quick calendar, school grades, model, emergency contingency plan, and a couple other things that you'll be able to speak to if you have members of the community coming and asking you questions about testing. So as a reminder, the reason, the purpose that we do the testing is not only so that we can measure student achievement, student growth, but also to kind of see how our systems and how the platforms and programs that we're using are working or not working, make adjustments based on that. This is a quick view of who is tested, and you'll notice that these are broken into paper-based test administrations and computer-based test administrations. And I'm going to talk to you about why that's important in a minute. As part of the presentation, you received a calendar, and those are our test dates. And you'll notice that the dates in red are paper-based dates. Those dates, students have to take the assessment on those days. So grades three through six, ELA and math, ELA is English Language Arts, which includes the reading and the writing. Those are paper-based tests in grades three through six. The majority of our students have to take the tests on those days at school. Now, why did I say the majority? Because we might have ELL students who have extra time, and they might be taking the test on a different day. But the majority of students are going to test on that day. Yes, sir?
Can you tell us what ELL is?
English Language Learners. So students who, when they registered at school, they checked the box on their registration form that essentially said there was a different language either spoken at home, or that they speak in their family, and English isn't necessarily their first language, so they get special accommodations when it comes to testing in their education. So that calendar is something that I hope you'll be able to refer to if you have questions from any community members about testing, and it shows you on the assessment schedule right up there, those are the days for the paper-based tests. The computer-based tests have a wide-open window, and you can administer the computer-based tests at any time during that window. So if you ask me for a schedule of testing, like, let's say at a high school, each high school might have different days that they're planning on doing their computer-based tests, and they have that leeway. But the paper-based tests, three through six, have to be administered on the same day Again, that's what this slide says, but it kind of lays out the grade levels and the assessments that have to be given during that time. This is what the calendar will look like in April. Those days in green are the days that are what we call the testing window, and the two assessments that are going to be given during that time are the grade-three reading, and remember, that's paper-based because that's three through six, so they'll have to have it administered on a specific day, and then grades four through 10, writing. Again, if it's paper-based, it's on a specific day, and if it is computer-based, they have the entire window to use. So those days are used for testing, used for makeup days, et cetera. This is what the month of May looks like. If you remember, Mr. Gent said we were a Cambridge-recognized district. This window doesn't include, I'm sorry, the month of May does include the Cambridge ACE exams, AP College Board exams, IB exams. So on top of the state tests with FSA that we have to administer during the month of May, you also have those other assessments taking place at schools. So you can see, it gets pretty packed, and schools are pretty much on cruise control at this point with the way they are able to schedule everything and make everything work. But those K8s, if you're wondering which grade levels have the toughest time, those K8s with the different amounts of assessments they have to schedule, really have a tougher time scheduling and making everything fit into the calendar. But that's what the month of May looks like, and those are some of the assessments that will be administered during that time. So when we finally get those scores back, and we're looking at them, and we're trying to figure out what they mean, I included the levels, so level one through five, five is what we're pushing for with every student, three essentially is saying that they're on, that they're on grade level. We do provide an emergency contingency plan for our schools during testing, so that if there are any issues, the fire alarm goes off, we tell the schools, here's what you need to do to handle that, and then each school tailors that to their specific needs at the school. Knock on wood, we've been pretty good with different things as far as emergencies going during testing. We did have a time where a car hit a power pole, electricity went out, and we had to call the state and work with them to make sure everything was going to be able to be completed on time. But those are the kinds of things that we are constantly training and communicating the staff members at the schools to make sure that we're all on the same page in case something pops up that is out of the ordinary. I'm sure you've heard, or you will hear, from community members saying that they're interested in opting their student out. There is no such thing as opting out of the state assessments. There's a state statute that says participation in the testing program is mandatory. So I'm very happy to speak to parents, I'm able to kind of explain to them the importance of taking these assessments, but also the fact that there is a state statute that says participation in the testing program is mandatory for public school students. So we don't, we don't use the word "opt out" in my office, we're not allowed to use that because there's no such thing as opting out. And finally, this is a snip that was taken from one of the communications from the DOE that first came out when they were talking about best standards and the new FAST Assessment Program. And you can see, one of the things that they're highlighting is 75% less testing time. And the more you kind of drill down and dig into that, which Dr. Wild is going to be able to do in this next presentation, you're going to see that, that's probably not going to be the case. So this is going to be the last year of the assessment program that you're familiar with, with FSA assessments, and next year is when we change to our new standards and the new assessment platforms and assessment schedules. So that's what Dr. Wild's going to talk a little bit more about here, so I am going to take any questions, and...
What members, do we have any questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members, Superintendent Gent. Yes, Daryl is correct, I am going to keep going in the student assessment arena, but first, we're going to go over a quick agenda. This is a high-level legislative update, meaning we're not sharing every single bill. Smaller ones, we'll share with principals and make sure that we implement. These are the ones that you're most likely to receive questions about. With that said, the session did end March 14th, so it went a little bit long, and we will have to wait for state board rule on many of these bills. But these are the bills that we are going to cover today. It looks like a lot, and there are a lot of slides, but I promise I will not read them to you, I will go through them very quickly. The Coordinated Screening and Progress Monitoring System is in statute, and that went in statute last year as applying to our VPK programs. This includes private VPK and our VPK programs. So the new requirement that passed last year that starts this year is that our VPK students will be tested on a state test three times a year. The first one within the first 30 days, and then two more after that. And so the rest of the system sort of models itself after what passed last year in VPK. So that goes into effect this year, and then we will also be required to respond to private VPKs when they identify a student with deficiencies, and they'll be able to come to us for instruction prior to kindergarten starting. So that will be a new program that we will have to implement, based on last year's session. For this year, as you heard on the news, and, you know, as late as this morning, there's still more news on it, there were many bills that were filed in order to reach the goal that the governor has put out publicly of reducing or eliminating, eliminating the FSA and reducing testing. The one that passed is Senate Bill 1048, and it made some changes, but it didn't accomplish that goal yet. The end-of-the-year high-stakes tests will remain in all of the grade levels they currently are in. They will no longer be called the Florida State Assessment, the FSA. They will be called something else, not named in statute. In the governor's plan, he calls it the FAST System, the Florida Assessment of Student Thinking, but we don't know yet if that's what the test is going to be called. However, our students will be testing three times a year, the beginning, middle, and the end of the year. Next year, as Daryl said, it's the baseline year, and there will be no punitive effects next year, which means no school grade that counts for anything, fourth-grade promotion won't be affected by it. We don't know yet what they'll decide for 10th graders and seniors. It also should not affect teacher evaluations. So beginning in 2223, the end-of-the-year progress monitoring assessment is the statewide ELA and math assessment, formerly FSA. And that's what all of the high-stakes consequences will be based on in the future if there's no changes for the following year. In grades K through 2, in statute, the first test must be given within the first 30 days, and the last one in the last 30 days of the school year. In 3 through 10, the time periods are going to need to be established in board rule, so we don't have those yet. Daryl mentioned that a Level 3 is now considered grade-level performance, not satisfactory. And maybe a new acronym for you, the Next Generation Standards are now called the State Academic Standards. So that's for subjects other than English Language Arts and Mathematics. Beginning in 2324, the state assessments must be, the results must be available to us by May 31st. That's a very tight timeline. There is currently a 5% cap on the total amount of time that a student can test on district or state-required tests. So we have, we have to calculate that in every grade level. Now, this state coordinated screening process counts in that 5%. So it is a lot more testing days than our current system. We don't know the length of the test yet, though, so we don't know if it's a lot more time or less time. The results, this is new, very big change, the results must be available to parents and teachers within one week of the test administration. It was 30 days before, and it's one week, and that was a change they made right up until the minute the bill was signed. And beginning in 2324, all assessments must be computer adaptive. So that changes what Daryl just showed, where he showed the paper-based assessments. In VPK through 12, they will be computer adaptive. Therefore, the number of tests is actually going to increase. There are two additional state tests per year for grades 3 through 10, and that is in both ELA and math. And there is the addition of testing in grades K through 2. And none of the end-of-course exams for subject areas, algebra, geometry, all of those listed there, has been eliminated. They all still go forward into the future, including the new civics literacy test that just passed. And on the next two slides, this is really for information that you can look at later, but I've done a comparison to show you the number of tests prior to this change and the number of tests going forward, so you can look side by side and see, and then totaled them at the bottom. So currently, our students are subjected to 21 to 23 tests as they go through the grade levels, kindergarten through 12, and that does not include things like ACE and IB. And now they will be subject to 66 to 68 state assessments. And this is another view of that. I don't need to spend time on it, because you can go back and look, it's really what I've already gone over. However, as part of this legislation, they did establish a process whereby they're going to do an independent review that must be completed by January 2025. And that review, the results of that review will have to go before the governor, the Speaker of the House, and the President of the Senate for approval. And there, they are going to look for ways and options for reducing further testing and still complying with federal rules and regulations. They're also going to look at the feasibility of maybe not requiring students to take the third assessment if they do well enough on the first two. They're looking at the feasibility of remote administration for virtual students not to have to come in, for accelerating student progress based on the results, incorporating state-adopted instructional materials into those assessments. And then they also want to research the impact of this new system entirely. I know Daryl showed a slide from DOE, this is, this is one of their slides, it just shows you the timeline in a different way. And here, they've called it a Unified Progress Monitoring System, and illustrates that next year, the high stakes will be on hold for one year. So the question is, how does that impact us locally and what we do at the local level? We currently do progress monitoring using iReady, and many of you are extremely familiar with that. We do that now, and the results of those assessments are used for us from a curriculum standpoint, for teachers, from an instructional standpoint, and then also it drives the actual curriculum in iReady that is served up to each individual student. iReady is a vendor who's affected by this legislation. They are regrouping now to see how they're going to change their program. So our decision as to whether or not we can continue iReady will, is pending, based on the information they come forward with. The company that did win the bid for the progress monitoring is Star and Cognia together? Cambe, I'm confusing that with our accreditation process. They merged, and they have a new system coming out. We don't know if that's going to come with a curriculum. So all of those decisions are pending. I'm telling you only because we get that question a lot, what is going to happen to iReady? We are not going to have the students take a local progress monitoring three times a year and a state progress monitoring. We're not going to do that. Okay, I'm going to stop there and ask if there's any questions about progress monitoring or student assessment for either myself or Daryl, now that we finish that section.
Board members, no? I do have a question, Dr. Wild. The student assessments and the federal rules, does that apply to charter schools and private schools as well?
Yes. Well, private schools, no.
Public schools.
Public schools and public charter schools, not private schools.
Okay.
Yes. Private schools can opt into state testing, but they are not required to, and the federal rules don't apply.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I want to celebrate for a moment. Oh, yes.
If I can, I have three or four questions that are going to go pretty deep, so I'd be okay if I could meet with Dr. Wild, maybe for half hours next week or something.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Be happy to. Okay, we do have a celebration. We did an appropriations request for a program that we named Growing Teachers From Within, and we were allocated $984,900 in appropriations. And this bill was sponsored by Gal Harrell, Senator Harrell, as well as Representative Dana Trebalzi, and the Senate funded it almost at the total amount that we requested. So we're extremely excited, they're looking at this as a pilot program for the state. And so you know what this actually is? It's a program modeled after our SWEL program that we did with counselors in Florida Atlantic University. And this program will allow us to have 50 of our aides and paraprofessionals who have an associate's degree, who already work in schools, to be able to decide they want to finish their degree, become educators, and stay with us in the classroom. And we began the work of partnering with Indian River State College to design a program that will be flexible for their work schedule, and we will pay 3/4 of their tuition, all of their books, and we will be able to support them at the district level and keep that cohort model going, which gives them a lot of support. So basically, they will get a mentor from us prior to even finishing their degree. So we are thrilled, and we want to, we want to thank Senator Harrell and Representative Trebalzi, and I know Mr. Gent has something to add.
Yeah, this is, this is a really big deal, because Ms. Holly, I believe you were there when we presented to the, to the delegation at the college back in, in the fall, before the session. And this was one of the, this was a conceptual, concept idea that I presented to them then, and I could tell by the response of the body language from the, from our representatives that, because they hear from people all day, and that this caught their attention. So we really want to thank our Senator Harrell and Representative Trebalzi for carrying the torch for us up there. You know, this is, it's kind of a pilot, which could expand to the rest of the state in the future. And it's similar to what we did with our guidance counselors when we went through with FAU, and some of the, you know, paying for the tuition and things like that. So conceptually, it's like that, so that folks that are in, you know, teacher aides that really have an interest in our students and in education, this can help them and hopefully alleviate, you know, be a little bit of an assist in the teacher shortage that is growing across the country. So we're trying to be proactive ahead of this. So this is, so if you see our representatives, make sure you let them know, because it really is a feather in our cap, and it's going to benefit our staff members and ultimately our students in the classroom, and appreciate the efforts. We worked closely, Helen and her team, Nicole Fogarty and...
Kim McDougal.
Kim McDougal, who next year will be our full-time representative up there, they really know how to, and some of you are up in Tallahassee, they do a great job for us. So this is a wonderful win-win for the, for the school district.
Thank you, Mr. Gent, and I want to thank our grant developer, Lisa Slover, and our Director of Federal Programs, Rod Nada, on my team that helped to put this application together. It's the first time we've asked for an appropriations, so we're just thrilled with the results.
And I received a personal call from Senator Harrell to give us that good news. And so we also, as a board, appreciate what they've done, the senator and the legislator.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we're not going deep into the budget today, however, we wanted to call attention to this one. They did increase the teacher salary increase allocation to $800,000, which is an increase of 200, I mean, 800 million, which is an increase of 250 million over last, last year. And 50% of that amount must go to increasing the base salary of our full-time classroom teachers to at least 47.5, or the maximum amount achievable. That's the same standard as before, but it was 80% of it that had to go for that before. Now it's 50. And the remaining can go for your non-classroom teachers and for people who have already met the 47.5. So we're still working to get to that point, but as we wait for our individual allocation, this will go a long way, and we'll be working with our union partners, and I see Mr. Freeland is with us today. So we will be working on salary negotiations when we get more details around this, but this is good news as well. Less good news is that they did increase the FRS rates for school districts as they told us they were going to do, and Michelle Thomas has done a quick estimate of the impact of that increase will be about $3.8 million for St. Lucie Public Schools. So that is on the negative side of the news today. House Bill 1557, this is the parent rights in education bill that's gotten a lot of attention, and so this is one that everyone is getting a lot of questions about. So the bottom one is the one that's getting a lot of the attention. It does prohibit classroom instruction on sexual orientation and gender identity in grades K through 3. However, we don't do instruction in those topics in grades K through 3. So unfortunately, I think that it may look like we do explicit instruction, and we do not, so I just wanted to make that clear. The first part of that, though, is a change that will affect our counselors, and that is that we must adopt procedures that we need to notify a parent when there is any kind of change to a student's mental, emotional, physical health, or well-being. So we must notify the parent. I'm anxious to see if any board rule comes out with any further guidance on this. There is going to be some changes to some standards related to it. We are required to inform parents every year about the healthcare that we provide to... The second one is going to change our procedures when we do any kind of questionnaire or screening that we currently do. We do post and announce that if somebody does not want their child to participate, they don't have to. However, in grades K through 3, we have to share the questionnaire with them first as a result of this bill. And parents can bring an action against a school district if they feel they're in violation of this bill. We can't adopt any policies that prohibit school district staff from notifying a parent. We can't discourage anybody from notifying a parent of any changes that a child is going through, unless there is a reason to believe that notifying the parent could result in abuse, abandonment, or neglect. abuse, abandonment, or neglect. And then I mentioned that they are going to be creating new frameworks and standards to give districts guidance on this change. Another big bill that you've probably, yes, sure.
What happens if the student's 18?
That is a detail that is not spoken to at all in the bill. It is silent. However, I'm sure we would go to definitions of what a minor is versus an adult.
I wasn't in it yet.
Yes. So, we'll be, when we write our policy as a reaction to this, we'll address that so our employees are clear. Excellent question.
In the past, they have different rights. They're adults.
Correct.
So, the parent notification is kind of out the window. So, it'll be interesting to see where this goes, but
Yeah, that's why I was wondering if this would override their legal right.
Right, right.
There's other, Madam Chair, there's other language in there that's pretty ambiguous too, so I don't know how, it just says, just like in a manner, what manner? I, you know, there's so much.
A lot of it, Mr. Kelly, you are correct. A lot of it is because a change in someone's well-being, they, doesn't say the degree of the change, you know, it doesn't define that, and a change in your mental health or well-being is hard to define.
Teachers, I won't say anything else. Interpretation is tough with this for the teachers, eh?
Yes, this bill here, 1467, went through a lot of changes and it covers two topics. One is board member terms, and it ultimately did put a cap of a 12-year limit, term limit, on school board members. And, but it does not count the terms that you're currently serving, anything prior to November 8, 2022. That's all that it changed for board members in the end. Then it switches to instructional materials briefly, and then the rest is about library books. With instructional materials, any meetings that we hold for the purpose of ranking, eliminating, and selecting the materials must be noticed and open to the public and must include parents of district children. We do notice the books and we allow people to look at them throughout the whole process. It's the part about any meeting would need to be noticed that is a change in statute. For library book selection, this is the one that we've anxiously been awaiting for because we are looking to update our library book selection policies. Beginning January 1, 2023, certified media specialists must take a new course. This course hasn't been created yet. It's being designed by the Department of Education, and it will be available January 21, 2023, and must be completed by July 1, 2023. Every book that is in our media center or classroom reading list must be selected by a certified media specialist. And it goes further to say whether or not the book is purchased or donated. This is part of the requirements that we must have in our policy. And A is a statute that already existed. All of the rest of them are already in our library policy for these pieces. And this is that we look at awards that a book has been given. They look at, they actually use resources that are these professional resources, these reputable resources they talk about. And we also have that policy at the bottom for removing books. You update your collection on a regular basis. This is new, that each elementary school must publish on its website in a searchable format their collection. We do have a searchable format for the public where they can look to see what the inventory of books are in the school. It's not required currently to be placed on everybody's website, and we will be waiting to see what the prescribed method is so that we can incorporate that when we do change the board policy. So, there's a few more pieces of information that we're going to be needing to change our policy. And the other big change here is that when we come forward with purchases, that we cannot do them as part of the consent agenda. They need to be in a separate line item. And then now we have to submit a report beginning at the end of the 2223 school year to the Department of Education about any objections that we've had to materials and what our outcome was. Did we remove any? And then they're going to produce a list for the public. In addition, it emphasizes that school principals are responsible for overseeing compliance of this. That is the extent of 1467. The other bill getting a lot of attention is House Bill 7, and this really now covers two areas. One is creating what they're calling unlawful practices for employee training and also for student instruction related to race, color, sex, or national origin. And the second is establishing additions to African-American history instruction. In the unlawful practices, basically, they've outlined a long list of items that you cannot include in training or instruction for students. And I've highlighted for you so you could see it's activities that espouse, promote, advance, inculcate, or compel such individuals to believe any of the following concepts, and they're on the next slide. And this applies to employee training and student instruction. And I know that's hard to read, but you do have a copy there. And these are basically all related to anything that is a result of your gender, your race, and so you can see those outlined for you. However, they say they're not, it's not construed to prohibit discussion of the concepts altogether. It is to be delivered in an objective manner without the trainer or the teacher endorsing the concepts. And then on the instructional side, they also added that students must be taught to develop an understanding of the ramifications of prejudice and racism and everything you see on this slide, and that we must teach students to be respectful and encourage tolerance of diversity. So, there's both sides of that issue in this one bill. So, we will be very careful to make sure that everyone has a full understanding of this bill. This is more about instruction as it relates to the African-American history topics. And this is where you see in blue what you keep seeing in the press, that none of these topics may be used to indoctrinate or persuade students to a certain point of view. And they are going to create some new instructional standards for us to follow, and they're going to consult with the Educationers African-American History Task Force, the commissioners. They're also creating something new, and this is going to be called Stories of Inspiration that will be available to schools, and these are going to be motivating stories about African-American history. So, that's, that bill concluded. Senate Bill 2524 really became, we always have a bill that sort of grows into a train bill. This one has a lot of different topics in it, so I'm just highlighting a few of them. This one related to controlled open enrollment is going to create some changes in the Student Assignment Office. We currently must publish our capacities in our schools for the schools that we identify open to students to apply from no matter where they live. Now, we must keep that going and we must do it by grade level, and it must be updated every 12 weeks. We must also maintain a waitlist and call people when that waitlist opens up and accept students throughout the school year. We must publish our responsibilities related to transportation to another public school, the availability of funds for transportation, and any other transportation we may provide. And we also need to publish community transit or any other type of transportation that's available to students. Also, in 2523, there is an increase to the number of family empowerment scholarships that will be available to families going from 20,000 to 26,500. And the amount that they get for transportation was firm at 750,000. It's now seven, I mean, $750. It's now $750 are the amount equal to what the district spends. And our last amount was 1,059. So, that would be available as part of the family empowerment scholarship. They've expanded the reading scholarships that parents can take advantage of. It used to be grades three through five, and it's now kindergarten through five. That is the only change there. The bottom one, we'll be waiting for state board rule on this, has to do with instructional personnel who want to use school buildings after school for tutoring. We must allow them to.
Can you explain the concept, the reading scholarship, what that really means?
Yes, the reading scholarships are available to families when their child is exhibiting a substantial reading deficiency, for them to take a dollar amount to a private provider or tutor, an after-school program, and receive those tutoring services. It used to be limited to third and above, so now with the assessments expanding down to kindergarten, they are expanding the opportunity for those reading scholarships down as well. The process for which a family can apply, it's rather cumbersome for families because it's a reimbursement model, but that is the concept. And I believe it was $500 at last check, but I can get an updated amount. The next bill is Senate Bill 758, and there's a lot in here about charter schools and impact fees. One of the main components of it is they are establishing a charter school review commission responsible for reviewing and approving applications of charter schools that will then be sponsored by the local district. And this is a seven-member board appointed to four-year terms, as you can see. A university will do initial training for these folks. That training will need to be developed, and there's a slide about that in just a second. So, this is very interesting. Once the application is received by the board, then the district will receive the application. And as a district, as a school board, you can then provide input to this commission for them to consider as they're considering the charter applications. In the area of impact fees, an inter-local agreement entered into by the school district for our own schools may also be used for charter schools. A charter school may not be subject to land use regulation that would not be subjected to public schools in the same location. And charter schools are part of mitigating student capacity. So, this is saying that impact fees must be designated to a charter school whose goal is to also improve student capacity in a district. And they are also going to do an APAGA study to look at fund distribution to charter schools, and that is capital outlay and federal funds. And then make recommendations by January 23 of what changes need to happen in terms of distributing funds to charter schools. They are also creating the Florida Institute for Charter School Innovation. In a nutshell, this will be where the university will provide training to that group that we mentioned a few minutes ago, the review board. And also, they'll host, they'll do research, they'll host conferences and workshops all around charter schools. So, those are the highlights of that bill. Yes, Mr. Jent?
Just, can you go back one slide? The name Diaz, that's Mr. Diaz. He's one of the names that are being floated around right now as one of the top contenders for the new Commissioner of Education to replace Mr. Corcoran, just for your information.
That's correct, yes. House Bill 899, this is about the mental health of students. I did not go into detail on this one. Districts must name a mental health coordinator. We do this work already, and Dr. Michelle Gillard is our mental health coordinator and sends, does the reporting and all of that. It adds new components. If someone is receiving mental health services in school, we are required to let them know of available services in the community as well as anybody else that lives in the home. So, the entire family needs to be informed about services. Senate Bill 1054 adds a new high school graduation requirement. This bill has been trying to go through for years and years, beginning with students entering ninth grade in '23, '24. So, it's a little ways off. Students must earn a half a credit in personal financial literacy and money management as a separate course. Currently, those standards are integrated into economics and there's some in math. Now, they will, and in, yeah, economics and math, now they will be a separate course. So, students will only take seven and a half electives as opposed to the current eight. And then I just shared some of the topics that must be covered. So, I think this is positive for students. House Bill 395 is also a new instructional requirement on teaching the victims of communism, and it will establish November 7 as Victims of Communism Day. And I've listed the specific topics there, and most of those are not specifically isolated in our current standards. They are mentioned in world history and some in civics, but not to the extent that this law is requiring. So, this adds new standards for our students and for our teachers. And it also requires at least 45 minutes of instruction on the topic. And those are all the bills that we've highlighted for today. There may be more later as more details come out from state board and rules are established. Any questions?
Questions, board members? Seeing none, thank you very much, Dr. Wilds.
Thank you.
Dr. Mills, just, when Dr. Wild refers to board action, most of that is state board, the State Board of Education where they set up rules. They work with the department, you know, that give then direction to the Department of Education, and we follow that. So, this is really, and some of these could be vetoed by the governor, too. I don't see that happening based upon what we read in the press and what we hear, what you all hear is wealthy organization, but it's, some could, some could change, but the board rules themselves and establish kind of like the rules that we follow regarding this. So, it's very, very early in the process. And again, I appreciate Dr. Wild for spending some of her spring break because it was very kind of a, there's a lot more, too, but, you know, very comprehensive review for the board, just so you kind of have it in the back of your head. I also gave you a sheet just for your information. It's the fads, and it just kind of is a summary as well that came out last Friday on some of the things that she's talked about, and then there's other ones there, too. So, that's for you all. And I don't know if the School Board Association has sent anything out to you all, yet the weekly updates as well, and so this is just kind of a summary for you, and then probably have to come back. A lot of this really is for the school centers as well and for principals and district staff on what it'll look like for the next year and the following years. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Superintendent Jent, at this time, I guess we're going to open up. Do we have the time to talk, discuss our different protocols and so forth as a board? Do we have time for that?
Sure, yeah.
I know we have, you and I have an
Yeah, we get to until, we got, yeah. We had an hour.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think it's going to take an hour. I mean, we have an hour before that next meeting.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. Okay, so, at this time, I know one of our board members, I believe, Mr. Ingersoll, asked if we could open up a discussion on our protocols, board protocols. And so, we will open that up and we'll let Mr. Ingersoll please start out with the discussion.
Yes, ma'am. I just think it's important that we go over this. I mean, we've done it in master board training, and we've had questions about protocols and some issues that arise in our meetings and other things. It's just always good just to hash them out as a board and then make sure the community hears us and the reasons why we do certain things that we do. So, that being said, I just want to go through them all just to make sure we're on the same page. on the same page.
Okay, so we'll start out with the community constituent contacts, yes. So we have four of those. Direct concern issued to Superintendent, tell the constituent what we, that we will do this. Superintendent, will you kind of expound on that one?
Mills, another reason why it's important that we go over this is the, Mr. Superintendent Gent only has five more meetings with us, and we have to be, as a board, ready for the next superintendent. So it's important that we're all on the same page, and we're not working behind the new superintendent's back or anything else, and that, that's why it's really important that today that we understand what's being said here, so that we can help the board collaborate with Mr., Dr. Prince as the new superintendent.
Okay.
The, the first one there, I think the board, the board, this is something I think everyone does. This is where if you hear from a community member, you know, a parent or whatever, you norm, you all just, you know, you send it to, you send it to me, or you send it to Superintendent. And then we're really quick, we'll turn that around usually within forty-eight hours, if not that very same day, where we'll send, sometimes, you know, you'll get a parent request about a student at this school and whatever it is, and we'll, we'll look into that. But I need to be aware of it, so it comes to the superintendent's office, and then I can direct, what, what usually we do is it goes to the deputy or to the executive directors, and then we do a quick turnaround to the board. Sometimes we'll just let the individual board member know, because it just may be a minor case, but if it's something larger, then we, you know, we would, we submit that to the entire, to the entire board. Normally, it goes to the entire board member with a response. Sometimes you may just get a, a random question that doesn't really require everybody knowing that. And then others, it just depends upon the nature of that. And then we inform the entire board of that. So, and you're, and it just takes it out of your hands, where you don't have to really do anything, just, you're, usually you go to Chris, too, and they'll just be, you know, a response, you'll send a response to the constituent, you'll hear from district staff, you know, and sometimes you'll say, if you don't hear from anybody within, you know, forty-eight hours, let me know right away, but, you know, we, we get back to you. Our staff is great at that.
Madam Chairman, one of the reasons why it's important that the superintendent deals with it is because when we sit there and talk to a constituent, we're only hearing one side of the story. And when the superintendent does it, he hears all sides of the story. And that's why it's very important that we don't get involved as board members, that you turn it over to the superintendent and that he takes care of it for us. So I mean, that, that, that's crucial, and we can never make a promise. So I mean, Jack's good at making promises.
It's also good that our, our next superintendent is sitting in the audience as well, to hear this as well as our new board members, because what, what personally, you know, abiding by this, when I get anyone who has a complaint about in any school or any, you know, situation within the school district, I immediately notify the superintendent, this is, this is part of this protocol here, to take care of it, to investigate it, to do what's necessary. And, and he is right, Mr. Jen is right, he gets back with me within forty-eight hours, and I don't know, and I'm not too sure about if we've been really firm in the area of letting all the board members know. Maybe we have, I haven't really noticed that, but that's a good thing to respond to all the board members.
The community, the community, you know, things that come from the community, we go back to all the board members, if it's, like I said, just an isolated incident at a school center where a parent reached out to you because, you know, whatever it is, and you hear them all the time. Some, normally that may just go back to you, but anything that comes from the community or it looks like it could rise to a community issue, or something that I think, you know, could escalate, where somebody's going to be coming and speaking at a board meeting or something like that, we would let you know. We're hoping that any of those concerns won't come forward until after July of next year for the remainder of this year. Stay as quiet as it can be.
Does any board members, I want to open it up, any board members have any comments to how this protocol is being done, or have any suggestions or any questions?
Madam Chair, the only, only suggestion I would make is just that when, it's easy to follow, you know, I have a lot of experience with, with these types of things from before, but when you get a phone call, a personal phone call at home, from, which doesn't happen often, you still, you still have to follow this protocol. And it's a little bit harder to do, but it's your voice inflection in how, you know, they can get emotional about their children, and as Mr. Ingersoll said, they have their side, and we don't know the other side, but you still, I find that you can still do what this says and abide by what our rules are, even if it's, it is a phone call. It's just a little bit harder to do, but that's our job, so I, I agree with everything that's on here, and I think it's the proper way to do it, you know? And as you said again, Troy, there's always that one side, and there's usually three stories, so it's good to get to Mr. Jen about it.
Well, I think it's very professional, too, and it really does help with the community.
Yeah.
And what I have found is that with Superintendent Jen, I'll shoot him an email, and I do get calls, and I get them not as rare as maybe some others might get them, but I do get phone calls, but I'll shoot him a quick text. And, and I would say ninety-eight percent of the time, things are solved that way, much more easy and much less headache. Superintendent gets right on it, and, and I just had a few calls that he attended to that was parent-related, and we were able to solve the problem. So that's what we're looking for as a district, to be able to solve problems, and that's why it's good to do it in that way. Yes.
Just have to let them know you don't have all the information, and that you will get it and respond, that's all, but, but it works.
Dr. Mills, this is going to probably fall in somewhere else, too, but also, when dealing in personnel matters, too, it's, it's important, just, they definitely stay out of it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yes, Ms. Richardson?
Okay, so when it comes to the chair will respond to the board group correspondence to let constituent know that last sentence, no, I'm going to read it. Chair will respond to board group correspondence to let constituents know correspondence was received, and superintendent is addressing concern. It's not all the time that the chair responds to the correspondence, and I get emails saying that nobody responded. So, and you are not always going to be chair, so when the next chairperson takes over, then they are going to be speaking on our behalf. And sometimes I don't agree with, you know what, I don't even see those correspondence that the chair responds to. I don't know that I see those correspondence that it's like to the, to the whole. Do you see all the correspondence that the chair responds to?
No, ma'am.
I don't, so I don't know what the chair is, what the chair is saying. So I'm a little hesitant to agree to number four, and there are times when I do have, I could have a different take on what the chair is, because I'm the outlier. I've been told by Mr. Jen, I'm the outlier, you know, so I could, I can have a different take on what's going on, you know, or what your take is. And so I can't, I don't think that it's always okay for the chair to be speaking on behalf of me. I can't speak for anybody else but me, because it might not be your take. And we can't talk about this because of the sunshine law until we are here in a, in a, in a, what is this meeting? A notice meeting.
Workshop.
Okay, so I, I'm not in agreement with number four.
Dr. Mills, may I speak real quick? Ms. Richardson, I, I understand what you're saying, but when I replied, and I don't want to tell us in public, but I think I will, I had Carrie Patrick write four responses for me, and I would use one of those four responses, and the response is always the same. It goes back to the top three is, you know, "Thank you for your concern, I informed it to the superintendent." And it was put in a little bit in a paragraph form, but it's the same response that I used when I was chairman. I had four of them, then I just picked a different one, you can ask Ms. Harrison, I just copied and pasted, because the reality of it is, is I'm following the board policy by turning it back over to the superintendent, because I, I can't get involved. I mean, I want to get involved, but I can't get involved because it's the job of the superintendent. And the, the reply isn't the reply of the school board member, because I didn't reply, it's because the superintendent followed up, or his staff member followed up. So whatever the answer was, was not the answer of Chairman Ingersoll, it was the answer of Superintendent Jen, or Ms. Wild, or Terrence O'Leary, or school security followed up. And what I would do is I would follow up by saying, you know, "Mrs. Smith, was your concern addressed by the superintendent, and was it followed up?" And she would say, "Well, I wasn't happy with it, but I mean, yeah, well, at least we did our job. I mean, I may not agree with what we had to say, but that was the stance of the district." I understand we're all individuals here at the board, but the reality of it is, is my feelings may be different than Mr. Jen's, but it's the policy of the school district that, that, that we're abiding by, whether it's student achievement issues, whether it's behavioral issues, you know, we can agree or disagree one way or the other, you know? I was talking to my wife, and I totally agree with the school district policy, and she goes, "Well, that's your policy," and I was like, "Why, I don't agree with it." And it was about, you know, raising children and how to defend yourself.
I, I think also, Ms. Richardson, that I think it's a good idea, what you proposed, in that if it is a group correspondence, and the chairman responds, that they should respond and, to the group as well, so that at least you know what the response was. So as chairman of the board, I will begin to do that. I think that's a good suggestion in number four, because it has, that's not what I've done. I'll go ahead and respond to it based on our protocol, and then get back to the superintendent. But if you know that I have responded, you know, sometime you'll get somebody that might say, "Well, I haven't heard from anyone." That's, that's not necessarily true. But if, you know, as far as a response, it doesn't necessarily have to be true, what people say all the time. I mean, after so many years of, of being on this board, I have found that, as has already been said, there's three sides to a story, and sometimes something sounds true and it may not be, but we can cover for that. As you were saying with number four, we can improve in that, in that whoever is chairman, whatever they, when they do respond, that a copy is sent to all of the board members rather than just the superintendent and that chair. So I think that's something that could use improvement. Thank you for, for bringing that up as well.
Dr. Mills, that's a great start, but I would suggest that you be careful, whoever's the chairman, be careful how you reply, because if it's in certain situations and personnel issues or regardless, you know, that could be a violation of sunshine.
Yes, and that, that is what we need to, you're right.
And that's why it's always important to let the superintendent, you know, correspond.
Uh-huh, and maybe, maybe what we can do is the superintendent can correspond to individual board members.
Well, we can just, we can give you the standardized, the response that the board can send out, because this talks about a board group correspondence, so this is a correspondence that comes to the entire board. And then you can send, and you can just have, but we can have, which we kind of have, a statement, and it just says, Chris has one, you know, we're, the board is, you know, the chair's received this, it's been directed to the superintendent, and you'll receive an answer, you know, within whatever. And, and then that's, that's your, that's your.
And you know that's, yes.
And then, and then whatever the official, then whatever we find out on that case, then I can send that response to that parent and CC the entire board, or I can, you know, however the board wants to do it. In the past, we've just, you know, we've, we've worked it out with the board, we call you, we say, "Okay, it's worked out," because usually it's, it's an individual student case, but if it's a group, if it's a group correspondence, then we can send that response, which I'm very, which I do a lot already, using my own judgment, so that I'm not aware of anybody ever, you know, sometimes, like you just said, then when they say, "Nobody's gotten back to me," if, you know, we jump right on that to make sure, and sometimes, normally that's not the case, a lot of times they didn't like the answer that they heard. But that's part of, that's part of, of customer service, to respond to parents, because they're very, very concerned about whatever the issue would be, and, and we're really good at that. We're as good as anybody at that, and for anybody to say we're not, that's not true. We're, we're, we're very, very good at responding to parents with that, and then, so we can get a group, if that's the pleasure of the board, we can have a group response that would go out on group correspondence, that would just be a, just a statement, similar to what we do when we do parent phone calls, you know, it's scripted. And then we get to the details, we work it out, and then we send you guys the result of what it was. Now, you may have a follow-up question, a board member may have a follow-up question, which is natural, and then they could call me and say, "Okay, could you tell me more about this or that, you know, what occurred or, or whatnot?" And that's always, you know, we do that all the time as well.
And I think that, for the most part, I know myself, and I think other board members as well, but I can only speak for myself, that is what I say to people, that I've got your response, and that I forward it to the superintendent to address the situation, you know, and he, someone should be getting back with you as soon as possible, and that's my response, rather than get, try to get in the middle of it, and, because you don't know, you got to get, you have to, we have to have an investigation. But again, I can say, in, in the case with me, the district has really done an investigation on the situation, and if it can be solved, it is solved. So, and if it can't be, well, at least it was addressed, and that person, individual needs to, may need to go to another level or another step or what have you, if they think that it was not fair, the result. But, you know, again, we have to be careful of, of the sunshine, and I think Ms. Jennifer mentioned that clearly in her statement, we do have to be careful with sunshine, so we need to know when the entire board needs to hear the result, I guess. But we, we, we definitely will get tighter in that area, especially, I think, as, as chairman, to make sure that I will send, if it's not upon something sunshine, which means may come before us for a vote, can't send something like that, but I can definitely send the general response that I sent back to the individual, which is, the superintendent will look into that, and we'll do an, do an investigation and get back with results on the situation, address the situation. So I will be more diligent as chairman of the board to make sure that you guys get my response to individual people. Okay, we want to move on?
There were some, I'm sorry, there were some instances earlier on.
Ms. Richardson, I'm sorry, I know, could, could you move the mic up, because I, I really.
There were some instances last year when.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Some instances last year when we had questions, and I'm not sure whether or not these questions went to everybody or just Jennifer. You want to say something?
That's the hardest one, yes, you're right.
So I responded, and I responded because I had a thought, I had some on the matter. So I responded. Obviously, I'm not going to incriminate myself or incriminate the district in anything that I say, but I thought that during those times that these people needed to hear from the board members, or a board member, you know, how, how I'm going to help you, you know? And in those cases, I think that's where common sense comes in, that we can answer these people, but still say, "Listen, I'm going to send this to the superintendent, and he and staff will take care of it." But at least consider these, or constituents, and say, "You know, I, I empathize, I, I understand where you are, but," and this is what I'm saying about responding, you know? They need to know that we care, and that's my way of saying, "I care." But I'm going to give it to the, the superintendent, or his staff, or whomever, you know, but I'm going to respond. In those, in those, in those, I, that's what you're expecting. Well, I can't speak for everybody else. Well, I can't speak for everybody else, but that's what you're expecting, I believe, from me. Because as a resident, if I send something off to whatever, to whichever department, city council, whomever, you know, I want them to say, you know, Mrs. Richardson, I got your, from Kathy Townsend, Mr. D. whatever, Zdowski or whatever, I want, you know, I got here so and so, and yeah, we're going to take care of it. I don't want a form letter saying, you know, well, you know, I sent it off to whomever and they are going to respond to you. No, I'm writing to you.
Yes, in that case, you're correct, and that's what we've been doing all of the board. When we get individual people addressing us individually, we do respond individually. So you, we've been doing that, right? I mean, we, all of, all of us do that. If it's an individual email or they've sent it to us, but they might have sent it to the whole board, but they sent one to us, then we will respond individually to them, not just the chair. So you're correct in that, and that's part of the.
Ms. Richardson, I got caught a couple of months ago. I mean, some of y'all saw an email I sent out like three o'clock in the morning that, you know, someone said something and I was just like, oh no, this isn't happening. And it was to me, and then I hit reply, and then I realized it went to like 40 people. I was like, oh, oops, probably shouldn't have said that on behalf of the school district, but I didn't know it was going out. And that, you know, I'm one to blame because sometimes I don't see it all and I don't like click on all of them to see who it's going to. I just thought I was replying just to one person because I thought it was a personalized email to me and I'm alone. And that's when I sent out an apology to everybody, said, hey, I'm sorry, I overstepped my boundaries as a school board member. So, I mean, I've done it a couple of times where I'm like, oh geez.
I saw that email and I did not get the apology. That, that second one you sent out, it probably went to reply one, but it didn't go to reply all because I didn't get that, I didn't see that.
Yeah, but yeah, that, at least you know the email I'm talking about.
So board members read, the lesson to that is to make sure we look up and see how many other people received this email. But sometime folks will send an email out to just one board member and it's not up there and you can be more freer with that, what you say to that individual, but, but for the most part, we need to make sure that it's not something that, when you send it out, you know, it's not, it's something that we're all, we hear what you have to say, especially if we think it's going to come up for vote. I can see now that it's going to take more time for us to go over the master training, so we may have to do this in a few sessions, but at this time, we do have, our next meeting is what, 11 o'clock superintendent for you and I?
Eleven.
Okay, so we still have some more time. So if all heads are pretty clear in the conversation regarding community constituent contacts, we will move on to community email unless we do have, okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, what are we clear about on community constituents contact? What, what are we clear about?
If indeed someone sends an email to you, Ms. Jennifer, please feel comfortable in what you've been doing, responding to them in the way that you, as your own person, would respond to someone. Feel comfortable with that. Just make sure that you're responding to that person and not to the entire board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If it's an issue that, then, I mean, because what's, I think, I think what I'm hearing from Ms. Richardson, you know, she's talking to the parent, you know, I hear what you're, I hear what you're saying and showing empathy to them and all that, but whatever the action that needs to be taken by the district, I have to know what that is so that we can look into the, to the issue.
Superintendent Jen, I said that we, in, in the email, we referred this to the superintendent and staff and they are going to respond accordingly, pretty much.
But you all still, you know, you guys are still, you know, because you may have to talk somebody off the ledge, you know, and all of you have done that, you know, where somebody's very, very upset about this or that. And so that's, you know, that's, that's one part. You're counseling them, you're working through it, we're going to look into it, and then you'll send it to me. I don't necessarily know what you've said to them, which I don't need to know, I just need to, I just need to know what the issue is so that we can resolve it and get it back to the parent. So we're saying the same thing.
I think we'll just send an email chain, everything comes to you, so you'll see what was sent before. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if we discuss something like this again, I think we need Molly to be here for this type of thing because these, and correct me if I'm wrong, I need Molly to correct me if I'm wrong. What we're looking at here are policies and guidelines, which over the years on other boards I've really tried hard to adhere to, you know? Because you can speak for yourself as a, a single person from the board to whoever calls you and whatever, whether it's a parent or somebody calling you about a policy, you definitely can speak for yourself. And I'm proud to say that over all the years, I've never gotten deposed on behalf of any governmental agency I was elected to, and that's hard to do. So the guidelines and the policies are done by people who understand and the things you should say. And you do have to respond to an emotional parent and things, and there's ways to do it, and just a voice inflection of how you agree to it. But if you say the wrong thing, you can get sued. And you can involve your district and you can, so you have to be, I'm being redundant, I'm sure you all know this, I'm just reminding everyone, you know, that we live in a litigious society and if your voice inflections are incorrect and you don't show some sympathy, that alone can do it. So you have to be, I know you all know this because you ran for office, so, but I would like Molly here for these types of things, I just, just a side thing, that's all.
Okay. Okay, we're going to go right on to community email. When a board, when board assistants, which would be Ms. Christine, receives email, that email will be forwarded to all board members and superintendent, and that is what she has, her practice has been. The superintendent will direct concern to be handled by staff, at staff level and copy board with response. And, you know, my own input as, as the chair is that, that's very important, that we allow the superintendent to do his job and the staff to do their job. It takes a lot of pressure off of us as a board because that is not our job. So it has worked very well in the past years to allow the superintendent to direct concern, will direct the concern to be handled by staff, that it goes through him and that he's doing what we need him to do, and then copy the board with the response. And last in this group is superintendent communication turnaround response in a timely manner. Board is open to the board for any comments?
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
There have been times when we will all receive an email and Chris will receive it as well. So this would be a good time to clarify, do you as chair respond or does Chris respond when she's included on those?
Okay. When Chris sends me, sends a group email out that someone has requested something, then I send it to superintendent, that's what, that's what I've been doing now. If there's anything else that we want to do other than that, I will still send that to the superintendent. Or if I see the superintendent has received it along with the rest of us, then I expect for him to automatically respond to the individual. And I may also respond as the chair and just simply say, you know, the superintendent has notice of this and will look into it.
Ms. Holly?
Chair, Ms. Harrison did it under my email and just sent it out for me. That's what happened.
Procedure when, when Chris receives it and we all receive it as well, so, yeah.
Okay. And can you say what that typical procedure is again, because I didn't catch what he was saying or he does say what you are saying again?
Just when, when a concern came in with all of us, Ms. Harrison would just send it out under my name, my email address for me. She, she'd write it for me.
Oh, you're saying in the past, when you were chairman?
When I was chair, yeah.
Okay, well, I look and I will respond my, so you know, we have our different.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then reflect it again on the superintendent's staff.
Someone that can write a whole lot better than myself.
Okay.
Basically.
All right, we get it. Any other comments on this section here? Okay, so everybody's pretty clear and okay with it? Yeah, okay. Okay, we're going to go right into hiring of personnel. Under hiring of personnel, private conversations with superintendent about opinion of various applicants. Anybody want to open up that and speak on that?
I'm not sure what that means.
Okay. What superintendent?
I, I can tell you the history of this one. We had a board member, obviously long, long before y'all, superintendent would come and talk to us and then they would, they would talk openly about the private conversations over personnel matter or something before, you know, it just shouldn't be shared. So when, this, this was when the superintendent comes and talks to you about personnel issues, it really needs to be kept private until the superintendent has taken direction.
Anyone want to add to that? Ms. Holly?
I think we're specifically talking about hiring of personnel under this topping. And I know many, many times people will come to me thinking I have some authority to get them hired, which I do not, none of us do individually. So just to reiterate to folks that, you know, the hiring of staff is done by the superintendent, and I will certainly let him know that you're interested in this position, but that's as far as my response goes. And then have a conversation with the superintendent. You know, this person has asked me to get them hired and I'm not endorsing or not endorsing, but, you know, it's, it's his responsibility and I want the constituent to know that upfront, that we, we are responsible for two people as a board, that's the superintendent and our, and Molly, our board attorney. And we can't make promises on the superintendent's behalf on hiring.
Yes, ma'am. And the community has a perspective that they think that we do the hiring. We don't do any of the hiring, except we hire the superintendent. That's where our hiring begins and ends. The step, and the attorney, yes, our attorney at that, our board attorney, attorney. But the community thinks that we are the boss and we are the boss, but it's done in a certain way. And so it's the community, I tell them all the time, I have no authority when it comes to hiring personnel for staff. And sometime I have to tell them, my hiring is limited to the superintendent and to our attorney. And so I've even been asked to give endorsements or recommend, you know, be one of their recommendation, give them a, I, you know, and I have, I, in the beginning, I did that once or twice as a board member, but I learned that, that is something that I stay out of as well. In fact, I tell them it might, it might work adverse on you if I give the, you know, that referral. So, and I see here it's very important to have these conversations privately with the superintendent, as Ms. Holly said, if someone comes to us. And, and, you know, we may even think this is a good person, but we don't, we can't hire. Any, any other comments? Ms. Richardson, I see your mic, do you have a comment? I see you holding your mic.
Go ahead, Mr.
Just to take it a step further, just like Ms. Holly says, they, they think because you're in a position that you can have some influence or run to Mr. Jen and say, okay, can you hire this guy or this woman or whatever, whether it's maintenance, whatever. People will call you and, I'm going to, over the years, dozens and dozens of people have called and said, can I use your name, Mr. Kelly for a reference? And, you know, Mr. Smith, I, who are you? You know, and then they'll use a, well, I know him, Mrs. Holly's best friend, she lives next door. That's not a reference for me, you know? I see, I would be, make a long story, I'd be very careful who I put down to let you use as a reference even, I think, because that stays there, your name's on that. And somebody gets hired and calls up and said, well, you know, my probation officer says she knows you, can you, no, that's not going to happen. So be careful, be very careful.
Ms. Richardson?
I, I guess I'm still a little confused, let's say. It says private conversation with superintendent about opinions of various applicants. Mr. Jen, are we still talking about, could you, can you, from your vantage point, explain this to me, what this means to you?
I make recommendations to the school board on, on the positions, whether it's, whatever it is, I make the recommendation to the board. I really haven't had an issue in the seven years I've been here regarding this. So I, this may have been before, before I came. There's been no board interference since I've been here. Somebody may, may say, you know, I try to tell you guys, you know, who's going to what position before they come to the board, particularly at the higher level. If a board member wants to say something to me about that, you know, that's fine, but I've never, it's, it's not been an issue with me here. And it, and it shouldn't be an issue. I mean, if you ever want to have a private conversation or anything about the business of the district, that's what I'm here for. But, so I can't, it's never been an issue. The board has done what the board's supposed to do and has acted in exemplary fashion with this under my tenure.
We had to cut 300 jobs back in 2006 or '07, and this is where this, this board policy came from because somehow what we talked about in private was leaked out into the community. And people got their feelings hurt and people lost their jobs.
Okay, so this is an obsolete, probably, protocol, maybe?
No, ma'am, because every year, the superintendent will come and talk to you about positions that he's moving vice, or assistant, assistant principals, principals, cabinet that'll be changed around, people that retire, and they'll come and talk to you in confidence. And it's just important, as a board norm, that you keep that stuff to yourself.
You know, we've had hirings here that I've never spoken to the superintendent about. So is, does that mean that some people are being spoken to and some are not?
No, what it means is, is that I send an email out to you all and it, and it says what's going on. If a board member has a question or a concern or whatever, then they contact me and say, can you, you know, tell me more about this person or what their qualifications are or something like that. There's no individual conversation with board members about this or that. It's just, it's really, it's initiated by a board member if they have it. It's, it's really simple. If a board member has a question, they just give me a buzz.
All right.
So if you, if we have a opinion on an applicant, it's, it's, it's an individual thing, as superintendent said, to go to him privately?
Yeah, this was discussed thoroughly in the master board training as well. And it's really about the role of the board and the role of the superintendent. It hasn't been an issue here since I've been here.
We agree, we agree. But if, if we ever do have an issue, we can.
Yeah, any issue, yeah.
As well, so we want to make that clear, that we can have our opinion to the superintendent, but it needs to be a private conversation. Okay. All right, what superintendent communication? We have three bullet points here. Superintendent will contact board immediately with critical issues regarding student safety. Superintendent will keep board informed of issues via email, phone, or text. And number three, superintendent will send code red alerts to the board through texts. Any, any statements or anything anyone want to say in regard to this or do we just move on?
I think staff follows that well, Madam Chair. Every day I get reports on every safety, you know, it doesn't have to be directly for him, but it's from his people and his staff. They do a good job, Mr. Wayne.
Yes. Okay, they're going to move on? Right. Board staff communication. There's two bullets to address this. Individual board members should avoid direct involvement in administrative matters, but rather should refer such matters to the superintendent. Number two, the superintendent is the central contact for all communications and distribution between board and district school administration. Any requests for information goes through the superintendent to the appropriate apartment or school. Anyone have any comments in those areas?
I would say this is the one that, that we as a board probably need to hone down on with a new superintendent, because the reality of it is, if we're asked something by a community member and it's like, oh, and it doesn't seem that trivial, like a fine. Because the reality of it is if we're asked something by a community member and it's like, oh, and it doesn't seem that trivial, like a finance question. So then, you know, I call up Michelle and ask her the finance question and it requires just a little bit of work. But what happens if Jack gets the same question? And then he calls, instead of calling up Michelle, he calls up Raphael and Ms. Holly gets the phone call and Ms. Richardson gets the phone call. That's why it's important to work through the superintendent so that we're not bothering different department heads trying to get the information that sounds like a finance or personal issue. But the superintendent will know it and that he can assimilate the information out to all board members or to you. But that way we're not bothering each department head in what we're trying to accomplish.
Anybody else want to speak on behalf of this, this area? Ms. Jennifer?
I agree with you, Mr. Ingersoll, but there are sometimes that things come up for myself. And when I speak, I'm just going to say I speak for me, that it's easier, I need an answer like right away or I, it's, how can I say? I need to speak to this person in order to get an answer. It's not, because the district doesn't like to email. So eventually we are still going to be speaking one-on-one to these people. Because it's not just, it's a question one, then there's a part A, part depend on how they answer, part B, part C, part D, and it goes on and on. For me, for me, because I don't understand, or I didn't, or I'm still learning, still growing in this position. It's, I need sometimes to hear the same thing over and over, you know, and/or I need to, to get again more additional information. So it's not something that I can just email. And we are cautions against emailing stuff. So it's easier for me to call these people and say, listen, help me with this, you know? Or we're going to have a teams meeting, they give me half an hour, or they give me 30 minutes. I am not, I don't consider myself bothering these people or taking them necessarily away from their job if I'm asking for answers to questions that I have that is, that, that, that I need answers to in order to do my job.
I 100% agree, but it's just important to, to run it through the superintendent first so that he can point you in the right direction. Because that, that, that saves a lot of confusion and issues. And, you know, I could go on on a couple instances, but you know, that, that helps information in, in, and I don't want to say for lack of better words, but it's more efficient on staff time. So, for instance, if we have a contract issue and you want to look up a contract issue, you don't call Raphael, Michelle. You would direct it towards the superintendent or direct it towards Molly on a contract issue. You can't, we can't be calling up different department heads, particularly when we pointed out someone to do, or to do whatever they're supposed to do. ESC is another one, you know, where sometimes we have an issue that we, it's a whole lot easier just to call Mr. Tomlinson up and say, hey, Mr. Tomlinson, can you look at this? But no, we should probably work through the superintendent. And I am personally have issues with that too, because I've gotten caught and it's like, I'll just call Mr. Tomlinson up, see if he can help out this parent. But it's a whole lot easier, and for staff too, I'm looking at Mr. Tomlinson and he's known me for years. That I'm not throwing Mr. Tomlinson under the bus, calling Mr. Gent, but that's the protocol and what you're trying to do. But you know, Mr. Tomlinson's phone number's on speed dial sometimes, so it's just like, but it's, should be going through the superintendent. And I am personally calling myself out on that one too.
And I have to call myself on that one too as well.
I mean.
There are times when I try to keep it in mind to call, to call the superintendent. And, and he knows there's several times when I have done that and asked him, or not asked him, but let him know even of what I wanted to do. But for the most part, I have stuck to this, but there's been times, and I happen to have to look at Mr. Thomas, Tomlinson as well. Where, something just recently where there was a parent who called me and was very frustrated with her student. And I did send her to Mr. Tomlinson. So there's times when we do bypass that. But for the most part, just to keep things orderly, it's as much as possible. And to relieve whatever, you know, superintendent knows more about what's going on in each department. So to relieve that individual person, the head of that department or others in that department from certain extra work or some, you know, confusion with different board. Every time you turn around, a board member's calling and taking them from their, what their job or their work. That's different from something comes up and it's kind of emergency. This was an emergency to me. So we have to be able to look at that with this particular parent and her ESC student, it was an emergency to me. And so I took it upon myself to, and, and, and Mr. Tomlinson took care of everything quickly. It was so quick, the parent was just praising him. In fact, she said he was a great person, you know? So she went from total frustration to being answered immediately.
And then you, you made me aware of it as well, right away. I think, I think what's important here is that the, you can't put staff in a position. We agreed as a board, or the board agreed in the workshops that it would go through me, you know, so I'm aware of what's happening. Because the board, you know, the staff members can't be asked to do anything, they can only take direction from me. And, and we're going to get that information, but it's more of a communication piece that's so important. Because they're not going to do anything, you know, they don't want to be put in this position or even a principal or a school, it's not just the district staff. That what has worked and what, what works for, and we talked about it extensively at the, at the, at the training, that I need to be involved in it. Or even CC, just like a CC, like, you know, if it goes to Dr. Prince or whomever, and I'm CC'd, can you give me more information about whatever that is? As long as I'm, I'm in the loop on the CC, that's fine as well. And then we, and we find out what it is. But what I, what we don't, what I think we have to avoid is when it's going to them and they're asked to do something and, and, you know, to get reports or to do this, to do that. That, you know, that needs, that direction needs to come from me. Yeah, put staff in a position that they don't want to be in, because they want to, you know, they want to help everybody. And we'll get the information, it's just a matter of, you know, of knowing what it is.
Madam Chair, what it all goes through, Wayne, and if, I'm really talking to you about this and well, everybody. But the problem here, and I always bring up this word interpretation, and just like we asked to meet with, with Helen regarding everything that's coming back with this legislation thing. Because there's so many ambiguous things, what we just heard, I don't know how a teacher could ever know. But we have one right here that's ambiguous, but it's not, to a point, it depends on, on your, your interpretation. The word should here doesn't say will, it says should. It says, and we've been through this a million times, superintendent will keep, well, I'm sorry, not that one. Individual board members should avoid direct involvement in administrative manners. Well, the key here is, you know, administrative manners. So there's boundaries, there's boundaries, and I hate to use that word, but that's really, there are boundaries. I don't think Mr. Gent would have a problem if I asked Mr. O'Leary to help me fix my phone or something like that. But there are boundaries here and you know, if it seems like it's the wrong thing and it may be administrative, don't do it. That's all I can think of. And it, it took me a year or two back, you know, 20 years ago to learn the boundaries too, but there are boundaries. But words like should, can't change it to will, it's been tried many times and there are things that. Should I call you up if I want Mr. O'Leary to help me fix my phone? Or to find out from, from someone, are we on spring break for six days or just five? Or I can usually ask that question, but the boundaries have to be interpreted by yourself, that's all I can say. And it just comes with, with learning the boundaries.
I think what's important too is, is whatever the protocol is, that it's an agreement with the board. And that the board, that the, that the five board members are going to do that or they're not. And we, and you talked about that extensively in your training, and it just comes down to that. What you guys have agreed upon and you're going to say, consensus, this is how we're going to operate, that we're going to do it that way, that's, that's all.
Right, and we understand that and, but I do, I do appreciate us going over this master board, well, it says master board training, but over these protocols. Because it's more in-depth and we all have more of an understanding, hopefully, when we leave this meeting of what the protocols have been and what they are and the reason why they're in place. It's a much more in-depth conversation than we had at the master board training about protocols. It kind of, with the master board training, it kind of just flew over my head. But now it's like we're really going into it and I do appreciate this time that we're taking for the protocols.
Discuss two things. When I was a, a new board member, I went on school visits and Dr. Perry would go and visit with me. I'd call up and say, hey, want to go to this school? And Dr. Perry would escort me and we'd go together and we'd talk. And then I thought I was mature enough to go on a couple of visits on my own. And I went into a school and I said something and off the cuff, I said, oh, I like this paint better than that paint. And Terrence remembers this, next time I went back, the cafeteria was painting the same color I liked. And I was like, how did this happen? Well, didn't you want that? And I was like, I'm just a board member, I have no say here. Remember that, Terrence? And I was just like, I was so befuddled that I had that much power. And, and, and I, that people don't understand, they think that they're a like person, that you're up here, we're nobody. We just, we're the eyes and ears of the community, we represent children, we represent the taxpayer. And, and that's all we basically are, we, we don't have this authority. So when we go to like visits, you have to be careful what we say. And I say that because now that Mr. Tomlinson's retiring too, we have to reevaluate how we communicate to Ms. Graham. You know, because when we call, she's going to say, oh, a school board member's calling, and she's going to answer the phone right away and forget what she's doing. And that's why it's important to follow the protocols that we have is because we're getting, we're going to get a lot of new people. Retirement's kicking in, you know, Mark Woods is retiring, we can't call Mark Woods on our sofa at Troy Church. There's a, there's a whole shift of dynamics here at the school district that we have to be careful. And if we don't have the protocols in line, you know, things can happen.
Madam Chair, if I could, that segues right in, it's something I was going to bring up at the very end when you asked if there's anything else. But that segues right into it. The gentleman that we had here, if you don't mind, real quick, that we had here before that came, I forget, he's from the Ohio thing, I forget the acronym. Came in and I didn't think we needed that. Then staff told me what we needed and just about Mr. Tomlinson and everything. That gentleman would come in and would he help us with interpretation of these rules and things? Is he going to do that? He's going to, he's not going to do that? What is his main focus then?
That, that is the group, that's an organization, Yola, so he, you won't see him or hear from him ever again.
I don't mean him, I mean his, yeah.
It's, it's the organization where they will assist with the policy based upon our policy writing. And then that goes through the process, nothing will change, it's just going to assist with the, like the legislation, the legislation that's coming down now. They'll be interpreting that legislation, they'll give suggestions or ideas, the board has the final say on anything. Nothing happens without the board's approval.
Well, that really, I put it to you wrong. So what they would do is assess our policies and to see that our policies go along with?
Well, they, they would, they would assess, they're going to send, they're going to send their interpretation out to the, to their different organizations of that. We'll see stuff in there we love, we may see something that we don't like, that we want to tweak or whatever. But the ultimate decision of policy rely is with the five board members.
Well, that's exactly what I meant. So that question I asked you about, they do send their interpretation, that's what I'm asking you, yeah. Okay, then I'm, I'm good. And they changed my mind, changed. But that's, that's part of the thing and, and they're going to give you interpretations and boundaries again, you know?
Yeah, these are board norms, these aren't policies, these are norms that we're trying to live by as a school board. I want to say procedures and norms, I should say, so.
Policy, I mean procedures rather than policy.
Yes ma'am.
You call them rules, boundaries, whatever you want, but they're, they're norms.
Any other comments on this section at all? Always want to make sure everybody is clear minds or have any questions are able to get through before we move on. Okay, so the next section is the media. And we're trying to finish up this here, but we have maybe a tight 10 minutes. So if we don't get it finished, we will continue at our next work session. With the media protocol, agreeing on a message and refer press to superintendent communications director, which is Ms. Lydia, and call superintendent. Anyone want to comment on that? Ms. Richardson?
Yes, I'm sorry. Is this where we do the madam chair thing again? Do we do the madam chair thing? Never mind, it's okay.
I'm sorry, I don't.
It's okay. Protocol, agree on a message. What, where does the message come from?
Agreeing on the message?
Yeah. Who formulates that message?
Usually Ms. Lydia Martin.
Formulates the message. And how do we, do we get the message before the message goes out? Mrs. Martin?
Should we, superintendent, you want to answer that?
Yeah, what, you know, I think, you know, what happens is that the media will contact individual board members. And normally what they're looking for, you know, they want to get a response from, from, from you all. And what the board has done in the past, if they've referred, they've referred that to, to the communications office. Or, or you'll, board members sometimes will, you know, get the message from them, because it may be left in a text or whatever, and then give that to her and we find out what the question is. Sometimes there's a hidden agenda, unfortunately with the media, sometimes it's to maybe pit board members against board members. You know, so it's, and then what we do is, you know, we'll send that information out to you all or call you if it's something that's really important. To be aware that you may get a call from so-and-so and if you want to respond, as an individual board member, you have every right to say whatever, whatever you want to say. It's, but it's really, it's, it's, it's a way to, 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 to work with the, work with the media. So that they don't put words in your mouth or, or make your position seem like that's the position of the school district. So the best advice is, is when you, when you hear from them is to contact Ms. Martin so we can find out more too. Because there may be something more that we know that the board member's not aware of. You know, there may be legislation that comes from the state, they're going to, you know, they're going to respond, you know, you know, give you a quick buzz on it. You may not have all the information available yet, we can say, here's what it is. Here may be some bullet points, we've done this for board members before, here's some bullet points that you may want to utilize in your interview or in your response. It's really to help the board members to give a good response and to, and, and to make sure that they're really, this board has been really good where they've, it's represented the, the collective consensus of the, of the board itself. If that makes sense. So what, what the board in the past has done is contact Lydia and say, hey, I got this question, can you help me out with this? Or can you get, research it or whatever that is. Half the time she'll respond on behalf of the board members, sometimes board members will talk directly to them. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. So, excuse me, so we agree on the message. And what happens if you don't agree on the message?
So just before you answer that, I was thinking, we agree on, on the message as much as possible. So it's not like always a 100%, maybe somebody voted different from the rest of the board and the media call. I, you know, I'm very careful with how I respond to the media. Because I, you know, what we put out there is what the public gets. So, but it's not a 100% that you have to always agree. But for the most part, what we're doing as a board, the way I see it, is we're working together, you know? And that's what I want us, you know, with this master board thing, to even grow in that. That we're truly working together with the sincere concern for all people, you know? So, yeah, I mean, there's times when I, Ms. Richardson, I've actually said to the media, I'll get back with you. And then I make my calls to find out how the district stands on certain issues that come up. And then I, and then if I decide to talk to a media and I told them I'd get back with them, that's what I do. But then I have more of an understanding and a. But then I have more of an understanding and a roundness of what everything is, you know, what's going on when I do talk to that media person. And there's times when I've actually said to Lydia, you know, give me, give me what your message is, and if I need to add or take away from it, I will, but I try to agree as much as possible, be in agreement with the board when it comes to media things. So it's not like you have to agree all the time, but it's a good idea, good thing to agree with the message.
Can you add something?
Yes, Ms. Lydia.
Can you hear me? Typically, when the media inquires about something, I'm speaking on behalf of the superintendent in the school district, not necessarily the school board. I've been in this role now two-plus years, and I've yet to actually provide a response on behalf of the school board. Normally, when the media contacts a school board member, they're asking for an individual quote or reaction to an issue, and I have worked individually with, with many of you to formulate that response. You have, may have some ideas, I may have some ideas that can help you with that, and it's, you know, it's a give and take, and I'm happy to do that, happy to help you out with that. But typically, it's not that I'm formulating a response that the board has to agree with. Normally, they're really looking for an individual response or quote from a board member. Hopefully, that provides some clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Lydia.
It does, thank you so very much.
On that line, when people ask us for a quote, or what our thought is as an individual school board member, we, we need to reflect the five of us together in a whole unit, because that takes, the message gets distorted quickly. So letting it go through Lydia, finding out the stance. Now, absolutely, Ms. Richardson, there are times when I may not agree with that particular stance, but our message, because we're, we're one alone, but five is what makes us, so to be united in how we treat our community and our, our constituents in the response is the role I've always tried to, to live by, that I'm not representing me, I'm representing the five of us at any time.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Okay. Do we have minds clear on this section, or do we have any more comments or suggestions here?
I just wanted to say that in terms of the, the media, if and when I should speak to the media, I, I can't speak on behalf of the board, and I will not speak on behalf of the board. They're asking me, like Mrs. Martin said, for my own opinion, my quote, what I think, and so when I do answer, if I do answer, when I do answer, it's going to be per Jennifer Richardson, not the board. Because that's my, that's, they're asking me. So there you have it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think, I think it's just good sometime to say, especially if the media calls, to just say, I'll get back with you too. We don't have to always rush with an answer, but I'll get back with you is a good thing to say to the media, to make sure we're given a really good response, that's something that is us in regards to that. That's why I said if it's not something I agree with, of course, I'm going to say how I feel.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's no different from when we were campaigning, and, you know, you had to speak to the, not just the media, but the community, it's no different. Well, it is different, because you're on the board, and you have to be careful about your boundaries, you know, but, but you still have an opinion, or you should still have an opinion, because that's what the community is looking for. What do you think, so they can get to know you as a person, and, and know what to expect for their community? I just think so, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't apologize.
It's okay, it's okay. Listen, we are, have run out of time to continue with this, but we will take it back up on the next work session, Mr. Jen, the agenda part of it.
Yeah, what I would recommend, what I'd recommend to the board is that you set up a, a retreat. You would do that anyway, I would, that would be up to Dr. Prince when he, when he comes in, where you would, you know, bring in an outside facilitator from the school board, and kind of go over these items in a, in a retreat setting, so that the board is crystal clear on, on where they stand as a group. And, you know, that's normally what you would do anyway each year, whether you have a new board member, or a new superintendent, and you can kind of, in a retreat kind of more relaxed setting, you know, informal setting, have, you know, kind of get in and tweak whatever you would want to tweak, and that would be beneficial to Dr. Prince, and beneficial to the board.
I definitely agree with you as chairman, that we should have a retreat of some type. But I think that we've gone over this, this board train, at least for the next year, it looks to me like we've done an excellent job today on going over these protocols, but we do need a retreat, just so that we can have these further discussions within the retreat atmosphere, as well as other discussion that we might want to have. At this time, we are going to wrap up our board meeting for today, our work session. Ms. Jennifer, we welcome you back. We have definitely been keeping you in our thoughts and our prayers, and, you know, you know, we know that, that losing a loved one is not easy, and just so that the board will know, my sister, my baby sister, passed two days ago. So that's a big burden on me. Ms. Jennifer's son passed, and so these are times in family, you know, recently, not too long ago, Ms. Holly had lost a loved one, her mom. So, you know, when they're, the closer they are to us, the harder it is, when we lose people that we love, and we need to be very sensitive to that, but we are so welcome, so glad to have you back with us, Ms. Jennifer. Thank you so much for coming in today, we appreciate it.
Madam Chair, just real quick, I don't want to leave it on the table, what you said before that, well said, and Mr. Jen just asked us about a retreat, maybe setting up a retreat with John, whatever, in the next month, or whenever would be appropriate. I think we should get a consensus on that, I'd like to get that done, because I, and I think it should be an all-day retreat.
Okay, so can we have a consensus, or, as Mr. Kelly has just asked for, for a retreat in the near future? Or after Dr. Prince has come on as superintendent? I think that would be a great time, that retreat.
I wouldn't mind one in September, you know, just, just once Dr. Prince gets everything going, and then gives us his 90 days evaluation, and, you know?
Okay.
That, that's what we've done with other superintendents, is, you know, they had a 90-day plan, and then we went over it, and see how we can help enhance it, what kind of funding he needed, and stuff like that.
Okay, I see a lot of heads nodding, but I have another meeting, and Mr. Superintendent has a meeting, so at this time, we are going to end our board meeting.